Hello and welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, June 29th, 2021. This meeting is called to order. And I would like to note that Commissioner Lubomirski and Chair Sumutzi are absent. And we will move on without them. I'll request staff to call the roll for commissioners who are present and are.
Okay, Commissioner Davidson?
Here.
Commissioner Haberman? Commissioner Haberman?
Sorry, here. Somebody had to make that mistake, right?
Commissioner Mercado?
Here.
Commissioner and Vice Chair Pravat Ali.
Here.
Great.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ally. We'll move on to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda? Hearing none. Next, we'll move on to the meeting procedures. Due to the COVID-19 Shelter in Place order, we have had to establish new ways of conducting our public meeting. I'd ask staff to address how public comment will work this evening, please.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Chair Vice Chair Pravat Ali. At this time, I'd like to ask staff to turn off their cameras and only the commissioners at this point should have their cameras on. So this meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube where viewers can provide comments and like, sorry, no provide comments. They can view the meetings. However, you can provide comments by attending via Zoom by calling 669-900-9128 and entering the meeting ID 897-5534-1830. And what we would do is we would ask you if you're interested in making comments to raise your hand using the raise hand feature, or if you're calling by phone, you can press star nine and that will raise your hand virtually. So if you have submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or by letter, those have been forwarded to the Planning Commission and have been published on our website. I also wanted to just mention that closed captioning is available for this meeting on our YouTube Live chat site. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. We will now, we will begin with a staff report. And then we will go on to the agenda. I understand there are no applicants this evening, so we will begin with the staff report and then move on to the.
Chair Vice Chair Pravat Ali, I did want to remind you that the first item on the agenda is the consent item and that is for approval of the meeting minutes of June 50.
Thank you very much. Yes. Let's, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting that Ally mentioned just now?
Ally, do we have a quorum for that meeting?
Um.
I don't think so, right?
We have. Was there a missing person? No, we do not.
Yeah, because Commissioner Pravat Ali wasn't there, so we're missing two.
Um. We have three. Commissioner Haberman, Commissioner Davidson, and you, Commissioner Mercado. You were in attendance, correct?
Yeah, I was there.
I think that three is the quorum.
Okay, speaking to her. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
I will abstain because I wasn't there.
Um, at this time, would you like me to go ahead and take role?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Haberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yep.
And Vice Chair Pravat Ali, I have you as abstaining. That's it.
Great, thank you. And Ally, I believe, is, should I also call for any urgent communications?
Um, that would not be, that's not in the order of the agenda, I don't think.
Okay. So we just did the consent calendar. All right. Are there any? Should I ask for public comments on the consent calendar or the script?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We should have asked for public comments on the, on the meeting minutes. Sorry about that.
Okay, no worries. So at this time, I'll ask for any public comments on the meeting minutes.
Um, seeing none. I think given that we did not take public comment previously, it would be wise to just go ahead and take the, make the motion and second again. Just looking to Commissioner Mercado to see if he's still.
Yeah, did we open the public comment? There were no public comments, just for the record? Then, yeah, I'll make the vote. I'll. Go ahead, Ally, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, yeah. I was gonna say, yeah, we were, so Vice Chair Pravat Ali opened the public comment and then we're no public comment for the record.
Great. Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Ally, could you do a roll call?
I'm gonna do a roll call here. Again, Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Haberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Pravat Ali.
I abstain.
Okay, now we're back on track.
Okay, sorry about that.
What's?
All right, now we'll move on to tonight's item for the public meeting. And the item is a combination of items, so it's the General Plan 2040 Downtown Precise Plan, Inform Base Code, and Municipal Code Amendments. And I believe at this time, we will receive a presentation from Barry Miller, is that right?
Yeah, I did want to just go ahead and start, just give a really brief introduction. I think you've seen Barry provide a number of presentations over the past year. We are actually super grateful to have him on board. He's done a tremendous amount of work on this project, which is really kind of a multi-faceted project, reaching out, using the Steering Committee to receive input, reaching out to community members, providing you or your commission with updates and the City Council with updates, and then working with multiple consultants to try to just combine this effort into what you've been seeing last meeting with the final EIR and in this meeting, the General Plan Downtown Precise Plan and some of the ordinance amendments that are required to implement the Downtown Precise Plan. So I just wanted to just share my thoughts and my gratitude for the amount of work that Barry's done. Also wanted to, um, shout out to Paul Jensen, who is on, on here tonight. He has continued to be on the sidelines and supporting and providing his input and he's available for questions. He's doing this all on his own volunteering and I really, I truly appreciate it. I know Barry appreciates it. And so with that, I'll go ahead and let Barry kick off his presentation.
Great, thank you, Ally. I also wanted to give a shout out to you as a, as a commission for bearing with us through these many public hearings and presentations. And thank you for all of the important input you provided. I have a PowerPoint presentation I'm going to walk through. As I share my screen and pull that up, I also want to acknowledge a few people who are here as resources today. When we get to commission discussion, we do have consultants kind of waiting in the wings if there are questions about specific aspects of the documents in front of you tonight. We have from Placeworks, which is the environmental consulting firm, Terry McCracken and Torina Wilson. We have from Opticos, the consulting firm for the Downtown Precise Plan, Stefan Pellegrini and Matali Ganguly. I also want to acknowledge Bob Grandy from Fair and Peers, who is here as a resource, and Corey Bitoff, our sustainability coordinator, is also present when we consider the items relating to the climate plan or greenhouse gas emissions. So with that, let me bring my presentation up and just to confirm. Is this visible to everyone? Just a thumbs up from somebody? Great. Okay, cool. Thank you. So we are on this timeline. We released the general plan in October 2020. You saw this timeline at the last meeting and we are getting close to the end of the road here. This is intended to be the final hearing of the commission on the general plan, the precise plan, the code changes, and we'll walk you through the various resolutions that you'll be considering this evening. If the commission takes action affirmatively on these resolutions, this will move to the City Council for consideration on July 17th, so just a few weeks away. And then the council will hold at least one hearing and most likely a second hearing on August 2nd to consider resolutions and ordinances adopting the general plan, precise plan, and other ordinance changes. So I won't go through the detail of the timeline here. You saw this at our last meeting, but each of those yellow arrows represents a planning commission hearing. So again, thank you for your, for your patience and for your contributions through all of these meetings. So to recap, the last meeting, which was two weeks ago on July 5th, I'm sorry, that should say June 15th. On June 15th, the commission recommended approval of the final EIR, and that's a recommendation to the City Council that affirms that the final EIR that's been prepared for this project is legally adequate and conforms to the California Environmental Quality Act. So that action has been completed. There are four remaining actions and this presentation focuses on them. The first is a resolution to adopt CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, again, findings and statement of overriding considerations, and I'll explain a little bit about what that resolution is in a moment. We have a resolution where you are recommending to the City Council that they adopt General Plan 2040, and that's inclusive of all of the redlined edits that have been made to the document over the last few months. We have a resolution that you recommend that the City Council adopt the Downtown Precise Plan, and we have a resolution that you recommend that the council adopt a series of ordinances which codify the Downtown Precise Plan and rescind aspects of the existing zoning code that would be in conflict because they reference old zones that will no longer be in place. So I'm going to walk through each of these with a couple of slides. The, the first is the CEQA Findings of Fact and Statement of Overriding Considerations. We talked a little bit about this at the last Planning Commission meeting. In a nutshell, the, whenever an EIR identifies significant unavoidable impacts, there is a requirement that we adopt findings that explain why the benefits of the project outweigh these impacts. In this case, we have an EIR that identified significant unavoidable impacts on air quality, cultural resources, greenhouse gases, and transportation. You received a presentation that discussing more detail what those impacts were, and we talked a little bit about the fact that there were other impacts that could have been significant, but they were mitigatable to less than significant levels by adding certain policies and programs to General Plan 2040. but they were mitigatable to less than significant levels by adding certain policies and programs to General Plan 2040. So the statement of overriding considerations becomes part of the record of approval for the project. Uh, we will ask you to act on this resolution only after you've had a discussion of the General Plan 2040 and Downtown Precise Plan. Uh, it would be premature for you to take this action right now, but you can do it later in the meeting after you've had that, uh, that conversation and heard from the public about these other plans. Uh, we have essentially laid out in the findings resolution. It's, it's quite a long resolution because it recites all of the findings of the final EIR, including the mitigation measures. And it describes the alternatives in the, uh, to the General Plan that were looked at in the EIR. Uh, but it does conclude that there are economic benefits that you see listed here, environmental benefits that you see listed here, and social benefits that you see here that do outweigh the environmental impacts that have been documented in the project. And it provides that legal basis for making that, um, that decision to approve the EIR. So you'll, you'll be looking at that resolution, uh, later on. Uh, the next resolution, 2021-04 recommends that the council adopts General Plan 2040. So the resolution itself basically talks about the history of the project and the work that's been done, the community engagement that happened during the two and a half year process to develop the plan. Uh, and then may, there are a series of findings that are made that the public interest will be served by the adoption of the General Plan. Uh, and it goes element by element and explains why. Uh, there's a finding that the plan retains the basic urban framework of the city, urban and open space framework, and is consistent with regional plans. Uh, and also that it advances the guiding principles and the vision for 2040 as expressed in the General Plan. Um, so this resolution is before you. Now, we, um, went into a detailed presentation at the June 15th meeting about the changes that have been made to the General Plan, so I'm not gonna repeat all of that information. At this meeting, I did just wanna recap that there were over 600 comments, individual discreet comments that we identified, uh, over the eight months of General Plan review. And the edits to the document, which are in-track changes, respond to those comments and also to the comments from the Planning Commission during your, uh, hours of deliberation and discussion of the plan. The edits also incorporate mitigation measures from the Environmental Impact Report. So where there was a potential impact in that EIR and it said, hey, you can mitigate this impact if you add a program to your General Plan that, uh, that does X, Y, and Z. We have included those mitigation measures in the plan, so those are, uh, one of the categories of edits. There were also some staff clarifications and corrections that have been made. And then the technical appendices to the General Plan, uh, we, which weren't posted online in October of last year, were all posted online in May as part of this process. So at that June 15th meeting, you heard from a number of members of the public and you, we received some letters uh, asking for stronger language on tree protection in the plan. Uh, the commission was forwarded the, the, the correspondence. Uh, there were some miscellaneous editorial changes that were requested. There were a couple of figures where we had said we're gonna replace this figure with a final version, uh, by the June 29th hearing. So that's been done and we did add language to the General Plan that affirmatively speaks to, uh, adopting a tree ordinance and looking at tree protection procedures. I, I do wanna say with respect to tree, uh, protection, uh, staff believes it would be premature at this time to start specifying the individual trees to be protected and the diameter of the trees and the processes. That's really something that happens later when the city actually gets to doing the tree ordinance. Really what the General Plan does is it includes that program language that says this is something that the city will do in the future as it implements the General Plan. So it becomes an action item that will need to be done in the future and the, and those, uh, details will happen through that process. Uh, okay, the resolution 2021-05 recommends the council adoption of the Downtown Precise Plan. Uh, we didn't talk that much about the Precise Plan at the last meeting and I do have a few slides coming up that will walk you through the changes that have been made to that plan since it was published in December of 2020. Uh, as far as the resolution, again, it talks about the project, its history, uh, what came out of the Precise Plan and why it was done, the community engagement that was done, uh, it, and then there are, again, a series of findings in the resolution. The plan is consistent with General Plan 2040 and it will sustain and enhance Downtown San Rafael. Uh, we find that the plan is in the public interest and there's a series of, uh, of recitals that explain why the plan is beneficial and you can see some of those here. And then the plan promotes development that's harmonious with the area's character. And there are specific, uh, cite citations to historic preservation provisions, the provisions for upper story setbacks that are in the Form Based Code. Uh, so the resolution again is really explaining, uh, why the commission is recommending approval of the document to the council. Uh, so in the next couple of slides, I'm going to walk you through the changes that have been made to the draft Precise Plan, which the commission reviewed, uh, in January and February. So the document was released just before Christmas in December 2020. Uh, the commission held hearings on the Precise Plan, January 12th, January 26th, and March, uh, sorry, February 9th. And we heard a number of comments from both commissioners and the public. And, um, I'm going to explain how those have been responded to. Uh, first of all, there were some minor revisions to the boundary of the area. And I wanna point out, there's three red circles you see on here. Uh, two of those are parcels on Mission Avenue that are through lots that go all the way through to Laurel Street. They had been split by the boundary of the Precise Plan and these are developed parcels with existing buildings. And we didn't wanna create a situation where half of the parcel was in one zone and half was in another. These parcels are in the same zone right now. And so what we're doing is extending the boundary of the Precise Plan to make those whole and keep those within the boundary. Uh, the other was at the corner of Fourth and Grand where we heard from an applicant who's interested in doing a mixed-use project, uh, that two of the part, of the parcels were in the boundary and one was out. And there was a small change made to include, uh, a lot that was part of that project within the boundary. So that's, uh, that's the other boundary change. So all of the maps in the Downtown Precise Plan have been changed to show the revised boundaries. Um, one of the major areas of conversation on the Precise Plan was regarding how you apply state density bonuses in the plan area and also how the density, the state density bonuses relate to the local height bonuses that are in the Precise Plan. And those, those are different and we, uh, recognize the need to explain that in more detail. Uh, some of that explanation is in this, in the Precise Plan and some of that, uh, will, will, um, actually be uh, done administratively through documents that are on the Planning Department's website that are not adopted as part of the precise, excuse me, as part of the Precise Plan. Uh, so just to clarify, again, the state density bonus allows, uh, bonuses of up to 50% for projects that incorporate, for market rate projects that include affordable units. So if you're building a development and you're setting aside a certain percentage of units for low and very low income housing, you are entitled to a density bonus. Uh, but there is no density metric in the Precise Plan. We are only using a height metric. So the question of how do you calculate the density bonus without density, uh, was raised. And we've looked at a number of other cities that have wrestled with this question and developed an, an approach which is modeled after those cities, uh, including San Francisco, Santa Cruz, and Santa Rosa. They've all, uh, adopted plans that don't have density, that do have bonuses. Essentially, what you do is you calculate the, uh, the number of units that would be allowed under the base zoning just by basically defining the building envelope that's permitted under the Form Based Code. And then you apply the bonus to that number of units. And then you add that additional, uh, area, the, the additional number of units to your building envelope. So you can, there, there's a, there's a mathematical way that you can do this. Um, just again, to clarify, the Precise Plan also has a local height bonus program. And what we've done is we've clarified that you don't get both. You don't get to do the state density bonus and the local, the local height bonus. You pick one and we've tried to make the local height bonus the more attractive of the two options uh, because there is some additional local control over, um, over managing what that looks like and what we get out of it in, in terms of following the Form Based Code. Uh, the local height bonus basically gives you a 10-foot, um, a 10 feet of additional height if you meet the city's 10% inclusionary requirement on site. And then if you're in what we call the tier-two area and you exceed the 10%, you get 20 feet of additional height. And again, to clarify, this map is in the Precise Plan and the tier-two area is kind of the gateway around the transit center and most of the downtown core. So everything, and actually the Montecito Shopping Center and Irwin Street are in that tier-two area. So essentially, anything in this area where my cursor is, is eligible for a 20-foot bonus uh, for exceeding the 10% inclusionary requirement, uh, under the city's, uh, inclusionary zoning ordinance. If you're in the tier-one area, which is the west end, most of the west end village and along parts of Mission and Fifth, uh, you are only eligible for a 10-foot local height bonus. And that is really, uh, because these are areas that are adjacent to lower-density neighborhoods, areas that are more, um, residential in character and in some cases are at higher elevations where the building profile would be more visible, uh, from the freeway and from other parts of downtown. So this is now, uh, all baked into the Precise Plan, I think in a way that's clearer now than it was before. And there will be, uh, some additional administrative memos that explain this for applicants in the future. Uh, another question came up about calculation of height on sloped sites. The issue, uh, was if you're on a slight that is, uh, 20 feet taller on one street than another that runs through a block, how do you calculate the height limit? And so we've added diagrams to the Precise Plan that explain that it's essentially a stepping down of the building envelope as you go across the slope, the building runs with the slope. It's not the case where the building is, you know, two stories taller on one street than it is on the other street. You actually would step the building down and that's explained in diagrams and in text in the document. Uh, another major thread of the comments on the Precise Plan related to the historic resources inventory. There were, uh, there were a number of types of comments, some related to the inventory itself, the number, the, the buildings that were surveyed and whether they were individual resources or, uh, you know, whether they were not historic resources. And I think I mentioned at the last meeting, uh, that there were a number of changes made to the, uh, the findings of the initial field survey based on a third-party review of the survey data. And those included changing the boundaries of two areas that were determined to be eligible as historic districts. Uh, there was also a request from San Rafael Heritage to adjust some of the building standards to reflect, uh, so to do something more like what Redwood City had done in their Downtown Precise Plan. Uh, we did take a look at the Redwood City Plan. Actually, we've been kind of using that as a benchmark throughout this process. Uh, there were some changes that were made to the standards in response to those comments. Uh, and in other cases, the standards were retained, but they were applied to a more limited number of buildings and a more limited area. So in general, I would say there's more flexibility in the current draft than there was in the previous draft with respect to historic resources, uh, but it still does provide that level of protection that was missing from the previous plan. Uh, some of the other revisions, and I'll just go over these very briefly. Uh, there was a lot of input from the commission about enhancing Fourth Street as a pedestrian space. Uh, we didn't take it quite as far as Boulder, Colorado and some of the examples that were given to us by the commission and the public. Uh, we, but we have strengthened language in the plan about, uh, occasional closure of Fourth Street and redesign of the street right of way to make it more of a shared street and really moving more in that direction as we look to the next 20 years. Uh, there's also some additional language on requirements for solar access studies for taller buildings. Uh, there were some requests to change the use tables. These are the tables in the zoning regulations that indicate what uses are permitted, require a use permit or are not permitted. Uh, and as an example, gun shops had been listed as a conditional use. They are no, no longer listed as a conditional use in the Precise Plan area and that's from feedback from the commission. Uh, we also added a number of urban design improvements, uh, and additional historic preservation incentives, a language on electric vehicle charging infrastructure. There are more bullets that could be on this slide, but these are just some of the major, uh, highlights. Uh, moving on to the last resolution, this is 2021-06, which amends the San Rafael Municipal Code to do a number of things and there, uh, the, the resolution itself is pretty brief. It's just a, you know, a page and a half. Uh, and all it really says is that the Planning Commission recommends that the City Council adopt a series of ordinances which are attached to the resolution. And the council will get those ordinances along with the commission's recommendation. So the first of the ordinances amends the municipal code to take out references to the existing downtown zones, uh, to adopt a new downtown mixed-use zone that corresponds to the boundary of the plan area and to adopt, uh, a number of other code changes that I'll go over in just a moment. Uh, the second ordinance, once those are rescinded, adopts the new Form Based Code. Um, so here again, I, I won't go through all of the details, but there are existing zoning districts in Downtown San Rafael that only exist in Downtown San Rafael and no place else in the city. They were created when the 1993 Vision Plan for Downtown was adopted and they are no longer going to be valid after the Precise Plan is adopted. So we're rescinding them and the standards that go with them. There are also some nuances of those regulations. For example, there were, there were height bonuses offered for skywalks, so you don't have to walk on the street. Um, we're actually creating a plan that's pedestrian-focused and kind of wouldn't really be consistent to be giving people taller buildings to build bridges that take people away from the street. Uh, so things like that are, uh, are also included in the amendments. Uh, the height maps for downtown are being replaced and a couple of other changes for internal consistency that, uh, that are all, all laid out in the ordinance. You, you note that, um, that ordinance is quite long because we've got a lot of tables that have, uh, strikeout and underlined where all of those things are being taken away. Uh, and then the adoption of the Form Based Code, we've gone over this at previous meetings, uh, on the Downtown Precise Plan, but there is a new zoning code for downtown that will be adopted as the second part of this action. Uh, it's chapter nine of the Precise Plan. It lays out the T4, not, the T4 and the T5 zones, the neighborhood and the main street zones, uh, which are being created for Downtown San Rafael. And all of the standards that are in the Precise Plan, chapter nine, relating to things like facades and frontages and so on will be adopted, um, as, as part of the ordinance. Uh, so last but not least, I just wanna close the presentation because from time to time, the city is, uh, is, uh, there, there are changes to state law that affect our zoning regulations and the city, uh, often will use these opportunities where we're amending the zoning code anyway to go ahead and make these other changes that incorporate state law changes or other local initiatives that may be going on concurrently with the General Plan. And there are three of these that happen to be converging with the adoption of the Form Based Code. Uh, and so we're bringing these forward as part of this action as well. Uh, the first relates to large family daycare cen, uh, centers. So these are, uh, mostly childcare facilities that are eight to 14 children. Um, previously, there were, the city had some authority to regulate those uses with a use permit. Uh, in 2019, the state adopted new legislation that, uh, essentially says you, you can't hold those facilities to use permit requirements. They're subject to the same requirements that, uh, that smaller childcare facilities are, are subject to. Uh, the city's been doing this in practice since 2019, but we haven't actually amended the code. So this is kind of a formal step to amend the code to comply with state law on large family daycare centers. Uh, and I, I also just, you know, will mention with this item and the next two, uh, that Paul and, and, uh, Paul Jensen is here. If we have questions on this, he's, um, the author of some of these changes. So we'll, we'll ask him for guidance on that as needed. Uh, the next is time limits for zoning permits. And currently, the San Rafael Municipal Code Title 14 specifies that if you apply for a variance or a use permit or another type of zoning permit, it's valid for one year. And the building permit has to be issued during that time. Uh, and it is actually not always feasible to get to that point in one year. And the city's practice has been to allow two years for those permits. Uh, what this amendment does is it formalizes the two-year term for zoning permits, provides a little more flexibility. provides a little more flexibility, a little more internal alignment and consistency, and avoids the need for extension requests. And again, this is something that's done in, in practice, but it not, it is not formalized in the code. So this would extend the time for zoning permits to two years. And then last, there are some changes to state regulations on cannabis that affect us at the local level. Essentially, the state has created new types of cannabis licenses. And we are changing one of the use categories, which is currently called cannabis-infused products, to cannabis manufacturing. And so the definition has changed and cannabis manufacturing, which is what it sounds, it's, it's manufacturing cannabis oils and butters and so forth from cannabis is allowed in industrial zones only. That's a manufacturing process. However, the infusion of cannabis oils into, into products, in other words, taking oils that have already been prepared, will be, continue to be permitted in the commercial office zones. But manu, manufacturing of cannabis won't be. And we can come back to this one. It's, I understand. So it's a little nuanced to get the distinction between these different activities. Also significantly, no existing businesses will be impacted by this change. So just to close out, I did want to point out, we've received a number of written comments in the last two days. We received a letter from Sustainable San Rafael, which was forwarded to the commission. And the letter, we, I wanted to acknowledge that they submitted a letter at the last meeting asking that certain statements be included in our finding of overriding considerations, which we have done. We've included the requested language and they're urging the commission to just stay vigilant with respect to implementing the Climate Change Action Plan and moving forward with the different actions in the general plan that relate to greenhouse gas reduction. Victoria DeWitt has asked for some minor edits to the conservation and climate change element and provided a link to the commissioners on the value of trees for carbon sequestration. The Point San Pedro Coalition has asked for some minor edits to the neighborhoods element regarding language on the rock quarry. And then San Rafael Heritage has provided some comments, not so much on the plan, but just on some of the staff responses to comments that had been done earlier. And really, I think encourages the commission to consider allowing landmarking of buildings that are locally important, even if they don't meet Secretary of the Interior standards. What I wanted to say about these comments is that we may still make some minor changes to the, to the general plan and precise plan in response to these comments between now and the time the council receives the document. There, I would characterize these as very, very minor comments relative to some of what the commission has heard before. But you are certainly welcome to discuss these issues tonight as part of your discussion. So this is the end of the presentation. We are going to turn it back to the commission for clarifying questions and then ask you to take public comments on all of the items that are before you this evening, including any written correspondence. And then, and then discuss the items in sequence, beginning with the overriding considerations and then moving through the topic areas. At the end of that discussion, we are asking you to take action on each of the four resolutions in sequence. And then depending on the outcome of that action, we will be moving on to the city council. And with that, I'm going to conclude and turn it back to the chair. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much, Barry. That was excellent. So now is time for the commission to ask any clarifying questions of Barry or other staff. And just for the sake of clarification, this is not a time yet for discussion, but for clarifying questions. So please go ahead with any questions you may have, commissioners. Feel free to raise your hand.
Barry, you said there may be some changes between now and the city council. What do you anticipate those may be?
The Point San Pedro Coalition's changes involve restoring a couple of words that had been deleted. I mean, literally like a couple of words slightly changed from what they were before, but not deleting them outright. And you've seen their request. It was provided earlier. We are, we will likely incorporate that in the revision. I think one or two of Victoria's requested changes will, will be made prior to moving this on to the council as well. And that, that's all that we have at this point.
Okay, thank you. My other question were the, the additions of the, the daycare and the, the other item. Can you explain why those were included today or sort of how it's being packaged together now?
Yeah, and I'll also ask if Ally wants to chime in on this or Paul just became visible. So maybe he wants to chime in on, on this too. Paul, did you want to respond to that or?
Well, sure. I'd be happy to. As Barry had mentioned, from time to time, we kind of group amendments to the code that are staff-initiated that are typically done as part of a collective action. And since the city, the planning commission and the city council were looking at code changes that are specific to the downtown precise plan, we thought it was an opportunity to fold these in simultaneous to that. So, you know, the, the staff report pretty much explains the rationale for doing this, but it was just an opportunity to group these collectively at this time rather than doing them separately.
And I can just add that it's just, you know, sometimes it's just a matter of taking the opportunity to do it at the same time rather than taking the staff time to do it at a later date. It just, it's essentially a staff time-saving for us. And, and, you know, typically we try to bring forward those, those items that are pretty straightforward, you know, corrections or, or things that are already adopted by the state. They just, we just lump them into one.
Thank you. No, that makes sense. Those are my questions.
Commissioner Davidson?
Just a question, forgive me, I didn't read the latest correspondence. What was the changes required on the San Rafael Rock Quarry?
The quarry operators had submitted a comment letter on the EIR where they wanted clarifying a couple of statements that were made to be clarified. And we did clarify those statements. Part of their request, including striking out some statements that were in there that talked about things like, you know, continue to collaborate with community groups to achieve the, the, I think it was, it was the way it was worded previously was not really comfortable for them. And so our response in, to their request was to, to strike the whole thing out. And the coalition has said, well, don't strike it out, put it back in, but just address the issue that had been raised by, through a little bit more nuanced language. And so we, we've done that in the, in our revision. I mean, I think that the, the language that they've offered up is a compromise essentially that addresses both parties' concerns.
Commissioner Havon?
Thanks. Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. One, can you talk a little bit about the, the process for deciding when there are overriding considerations for, what was the word, unavoidable emissions? So is there sort of a benefit cost analysis or how, not, just how does that process work?
Yeah, I can take a start at this and I, we do have our EIR consultants here. I don't know if, if Terry or Torina, if you want to chime in on this or if there's a specific question. I, I will say it's not a, a cost, literal cost benefit analysis. It's, it's qualitative. And it really looks at the, you know, the, the reasons we're doing a general plan and the opportunities we're creating by doing a general plan to address the very problems that we've identified that would be even worse if we didn't adopt a general plan. Because one of the things that the statement does is it says, if we keep the current general plan, it's going to be even worse in terms of the, the outcome. And so the, one of the findings of the overriding consideration is that the project, the, the no project alternative, which keeps the current general plan, performs worse than the general plan because it doesn't include any of the climate change mitigation measures that are in the general plan. So that's, that's kind of the logic that is, that is used on that particular issue. And that's, I think that logic is applicable for the other significant unavoidable impacts as well. And Terry, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you, you summed that up really well. I mean, these are all program-level approaches and the significant unavoidable in this instance is a, is a timing issue. It's not like it's a physical impact on the environment. And I think Barry summed up the fact that this is a better, better to have the new mitigation measures is the right way to look at this. That's the benefit.
Great. Thanks very much. And then another question on, on stepping down the height when the building's on a, on a sloped parcel. And is there a requirement as to when the step has to happen? And, and have you anticipated sort of when two-story changes happen? Are there requirements for when those steps have to happen?
Yeah, so there's a whole series of explanation of how this works. I, I, if I could hold off on responding to that till we get into the discussion because there may be some more conversation about that. And we do have optigos here when we get to the, the downtown precise plan discussion.
Sure thing. Thank you.
Great. I have a single question, and that is with regard to the modifications associated with cannabis oil specifically in the industrial area. Is there any need to revisit or amend the EIR because of that? Or is that use consistent with the current use of the industrial area?
Good question, Commissioner Revitali. No, there is not. And in fact, when the, of the amendments to the code were made for cannabis, they were all done as part of a categorical exemption under CEQA. So none of this changes the environmental findings. So that, which is good.
Great. Thank you. All right. Do we have any more questions regarding clarification from the commissioners? No? Okay, at this time, we will take public comment. And Ally, could you open the comment section here?
Okay, I sure will. I do see some hands already raised, but if you want to comment on Zoom, go ahead and raise your, the hand feature. But if you're commenting by phone, you will, will want to press star nine. And once you hear the notification to speak, you can press star six and that it will unmute yourself. So at this time, since I see hands, I'm going to go ahead and start. Lindsay, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Ms. Clum, are you there? Lindsay Clum?
Lindsay?
Maybe we should move on to the next person.
No, I think.
Oh, there we go.
Lindsay, are you there?
I'm here. Uh huh.
Go ahead.
I'm going ahead now. Okay, I'll start. Yes, Barry had noted a couple of the comments. I'm with San Rafael Heritage. In one of his last slides, they were noted and I will address them here regarding the being important that a building, the importance of local community be protected as a local landmark, whether or not it meets the Secretary of Interior standards. That was our request and the plan itself uses the wording recommending that the Secretary of State standards be used to make the ordinance consistent with state and federal law and legally defensible. And this particular wording, we think, should be stricken as it is unnecessarily harsh and creates a situation that may attract a cause of action. It's not an actionable offense to call for local landmark status. And then regarding the various incentives for historic preservation, I, the intent is to allow a building that may not qualify for either state or national status, but is important to local development to qualify locally. The, these incentives could be used to protect the economic pressure off owners' desires to demolish versus restoration, demolish versus restoration. And so we will continue to collaborate with city staff. And thank you, Barry and Paul. It's been great working with you two. We'll continue that and of course soon with the city council. And we have recommended certain parts of the downtown precise plan. Have accommodated certain parts for it to be more flexible and less restrictive on neighboring properties. And we fully expect the city council will follow through with certain revisions. San Rafael Heritage is forward-looking and fully understands the need to balance new development with historic preservation. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Riley Hurd and I am a local land use attorney who represents a number of owners of pretty significant downtown properties. First, I want to say thank you for the amount of time you and staff have spent on this document. I know it's countless hours and this is a new era for downtown. I'd like to address a specific site and then make a general comment. The last time you met, you discussed the property located at 1230, also 1248 Fifth Avenue. This is a super important potential downtown housing site. It's bounded by C Street, Mission and Fifth. It's a through-and-through cornered lot. What's unique about this site is its slope. So because of this, we were the ones who asked that you clarify the height measurement for the downtown plan and/or consider a different designation for this site. So as you heard in the document before you, is a rather traditional slope measurement proposal. I want to let you know that if this gets adopted, it will cut about 25% of the density from this particular property. We understand the desire for lower heights on Mission. But Fifth Avenue, which is the downhill side of this property, is appropriate for additional height. And so that's why we proposed a height measurement method or a zoning adjustment that would allow only 40 feet on Mission, but up to 60 on Fifth. And I wanted to let you know that this can be done in two ways. One is to allow a straight-line measurement method from the higher point of the site going out and then a 90-degree angle going down so that you're sure to lock in the 40 on Mission that you're trying to protect. And then you would have a higher height on Fifth. Or, and this one might make more sense, keep the upper half of the site as T4N 4050, which you currently have it, but make the lower half match the zone that it abuts, which is T5N 4060. That would be kind of the perfect transitional zoning for this site. It would acknowledge that it already has two addresses assigned to it, upper and lower, and reflect its unique nature. So at your last meeting, your commission was split on whether to allow this additional height. So tonight, we would ask that you please give your final specific direction in regards to this issue at this property because it's likely the difference between the site being used for housing or not. Without one of these two changes, it, it probably will not pencil as a housing project. Finally, a general comment for your consideration. I would strongly suggest, as someone that uses these codes day in and day out, that the interplay of the downtown plan and the state density bonus not be addressed in a separate administrative policy outside of the plan. The base density calculation, it might be the most important thing in the plan. And to hide that on a shelf is tough for those who are trying to get investment-backed expectations. But if that is the approach, you should explicitly state that there, if there's a conflict between state law and the precise plan, the state law controls. This would add clarity and would also make your document a lot more legally defensible. And it's, it's really just a statement of the law, but I think adding that clarity about that interplay in the document would be very, very helpful. So we've asked that you please weigh in on the height issue at 1230 Fifth Avenue. And again, thank you very much for the amount of time spent on this. And again, thank you very much for the amount of time spent on this.
Good evening. This is Bill Carney. I'm Chair of Sustainable San Rafael. These two plans create a solid foundation for a sustainable future in San Rafael, supporting our important environmental, economic, and equity goals. We're especially gratified that the recommended plans and environmental documents now include effective actions and commitments to address the climate change that will continue to affect us with increasing intensity over the next 20 years and that must be mitigated within that same timeframe. We, we now believe that the significant greenhouse gas impacts predicted by the general plan EIR can be avoided by concentrating housing and commercial development as the plan directs near-transit, inwalkable, height-friendly town centers. By rapidly implementing the programs in the general plan and the climate change action plan that reduce the most greenhouse gases, those being building electrification, EV infrastructure and promotion, and mandatory organics recycling, among others. Then finally, by closely monitoring actual emissions and strengthening programs to ensure that we meet city and state goals going forward. But speed is of the essence. Per the two-year priorities of CCAP, we must put key ordinances in place now so that the large reductions required can be achieved over the full term of the plans, with new development and renovations contributing to the reduction of greenhouse gases rather than to their growth. The technologies needed to reduce emissions are readily available and affordable, from EVs to heat pump HVAC to Marin sanitary green carts. Their rollout can catalyze our economy and heighten equity while also healing our environment. What's needed now is your leadership to integrate these practical solutions into the fabric of our community. The fact that the EIR continues to find the greenhouse gas impacts of General Plan 2040 to be quote "significant and unavoidable" raises a bright red flag, spurring San Rafael to meet its climate goals and thereby prove those predictions wrong. So we urge you and the city as a whole to carefully weigh the greenhouse gas impacts of every action that comes before you pursuant to these plans and to limit those impacts to retain our city's trajectory towards net zero emissions. In doing so, finally, we also ask you bear in mind that the 20-year term of this new general plan coincides with what many scientists consider the final two decades left to cut greenhouse gas emissions enough to avoid irreversible tipping points that would move climate change beyond human control altogether. So thanks to you and your staff, and especially to Barry Miller, for the great work that's created these plans, and more importantly, for their great work ahead. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Victoria DeWitt. And I submitted a letter dated today, June 28th, where I addressed some issues around greenhouse minimizing or eliminating or reducing greenhouse gases. In particular, I would like the commission to consider replacing the language to protect the California redwoods with stronger language and actually defining California redwoods as a protected species. And to piggyback on what Bill Carney was talking about, you know, this has to do with climate change and eliminating or reducing greenhouse gases. And so I think it's important to address the tree protection and preservation along with the other avenues to do that. I also submitted a letter on February 9th to the Planning Commission regarding the San Rafael precise plan. And I specifically asked about the triangular-shaped area of land in the West End Village. That I believe when Barry showed the map for the tiered height boundaries, although he talked about the core downtown and the gateway to San Rafael is having these increased densities. I believe this triangular-shaped area at the end of the West End Village, at the end of Fourth Street, is also zoned for that type of density. And this triangular-shaped area is bordered by Ida Street to the east, Second Street to the south, and Fourth Street to the north. It consists of eight separate parcels with seven separate owners. Some of these parcels border both Fourth and Second, some border just Fourth, some just Second. And I was concerned about the zoning being applied to this whole area, which is bordered by lower densities all around it. In fact, even on Second Street, the south side, there are single-family residential homes bordering it. So I think that should be looked at, and, and that zoning should be lowered. I think the proposed is the T4MS 040/60. And the, on two sides, there's a T4MS 040/50. To the north and to the east, there's T4N 30/40. And I think that the proposed zoning should be lowered. In fact, maybe even there should be a mix of zoning, since there's several different parcels there, to more attractively transition from lower density surrounding this area to a higher density. So I would suggest that that be looked at and hopefully changed to be more attractive to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Go ahead, Leslie.
Hi, my name is Leslie Simons. I'm a longtime resident. And I'm expressing mostly to GP 2040 at this point. I have three points to illustrate. First, regarding the issue of greenhouse gas emissions. The page 241 gives way too much faith in utility delivery systems. Buildings use of natural gas corresponds equally with the emissions involved with electricity. Our three-day blackout two years ago was, I was able to at least serve warm food with candles in the fireplace. It was not as bad as for those who rely on electricity alone. Such future outages may become far more frequent with the ongoing issue of climate change and the related utility delivery problems. Not all have access to solar, especially those on north and east-facing slopes. Five months of the year, there is little to no sun. Until delivery becomes more reliable, we should not push to make unsustainable alteration. For now, I will keep my gas, all of my utilities, and fixtures are simple, quiet, efficient, and gas-dependent. Relating to Chart 6.1 on page 243, I don't understand the difference between on-road transportation and on-road vehicles and equipment, accounting for nearly three-quarters of greenhouse gas emissions. Converting to hybrid vehicles would result in the greatest effect on emissions. Next, the determination for location of the downtown library was to occur after a comparison of the studies between the existing location and the Albert Park. On page 380, Albert Park is stated as "the preferred alternative." Have the studies to compare these two sites been accomplished? If so, apparently without public comment. Is it possible that the comparison study has not been completed? Then that should be so noted. It is the most appropriate site for a swimming facility south of Puerto Suelo. Finally, I have submitted a suggestion for the westbound Luton's to Lindaro transition to both Barry Miller and Bill Guerin. I hope the city will take this dangerous situation seriously. Thank you.
And I do not see any more. See one more. Go ahead. I think you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I'm Belle Cole. I'm Chair of OFA Marin. It's an advocacy group fighting to reverse climate change since 2009. And I want to support the letter you just received from Bill Carney. And I refer to the emphasis on achieving significant reductions of greenhouse gas emissions, especially those that target the primary sectors driving emissions, including building electrification, EV infrastructure, and mandatory organics recycling. It's a latter I want to comment on. I want to commend these particular actions stated in the plan. Reductions of GHG emissions generated by landfill waste as well as reduction of natural resource depletion through recycling. And the policies also support greener infrastructure, sewage treatment facilities that promote resource reuse, energy microgrids, reduced emissions associated with water delivery and wastewater collection and treatment, and increased carbon sequestration in the design of streets and drainage systems. From the work I'm engaged in now, I see these sectors expanding in the near term to include development of low emission biomass recovery systems and products. I want to praise the city for having ambitious greenhouse gas emission goals that are aligned with Drawdown Marin and for anticipating that, quote, "more aggressive goals may be adopted." The voters had the foresight to pass Measure C, so we don't, so we also now have a wildfire prevention authority. Still, no matter how aggressive and grounded in superb planning, creativity, innovation the plan is, what we are faced with are the daunting consequences of climate change, resulting in extreme heat, drought, and wildfires, among other things. And I'm going to mention a few of these effects. Climate change is making episodes of extreme heat more frequent, longer, and more intense. This past weekend, a town in British Columbia reached nearly 116 degrees, the highest temperature ever recorded in Canada. With over 4 million acres burned in 2020, toxic smoke smothering the state in eerie orange skies. Every Californian was impacted by wildfires. At least 35 people died directly from California wildfires. And a recent analysis from Stanford estimates that more than 1,200 Californians lost their lives prematurely due to wildfire smoke. The impact on government services that emergencies exact is enormous, including the loss of property and other economic losses due to fire damage and disruption. One estimate of these losses for the 2009 fire season is $80 billion, with just a fraction of the acres we lost in 2020. Scientists and economists are clear, we must dramatically cut emissions and remove greenhouse gas pollutants we've already put into the atmosphere to secure a climate-safe future. And to avoid runaway climate change, we must accelerate climate policy timelines and invest now to avoid significantly greater costs in terms of lives and dollars later. Thank you very much.
Annika, go ahead.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Annika Osborne. I'm a 17-year resident of San Rafael, and I represent my own views and speak on behalf of Cool the Earth and Drive Clean Bay Area, a local nonprofit with a mission to reduce carbon emissions and air pollution. I want to thank you for your aggressive greenhouse gas reduction policies. And I ask that you speed them up. We're already seeing the effects of the climate crisis here in, in San Rafael, causing hot weather events and sea level rise. With the drought augmenting fire risk, we are now anticipating an early fire season with perhaps a naive hope that devastating fires don't strike locally. But it is clear that our house, San Rafael, is on fire. We need to dramatically reduce fossil fuel combustion, which results in greenhouse gas emissions and air pollution. With transportation representing such a large part of our individual carbon footprint, it is essential that we quickly transition San Rafael residents and employees out of gas cars. Cool the Earth and Drive Clean Bay Area suggests walking, biking, e-biking in place of commutes and gas-driven errands. And if residents require a car, we ask that they pledge to make their next car electric, as new gas cars will be on this earth for 12 to 15 years, emitting carbon emissions and air pollution, which incidentally impact communities of concern and children the worst. To meet our greenhouse gas targets, we need about 50% of all cars in San Rafael to be electric by 2030. So we suggest that we speed up this transition. Thank you.
And I see no other hands up. Just give it a few seconds here. See no more hands up.
Great. Thank you, Hallie. And thank you to all the members of the public for their thoughtful, important, and eloquent comments. We will now enter into a discussion session between the commissioners and staff. And what we will do is we will speak about each of the four topics separately, starting with the statement of overriding considerations. So if any commissioner has any, yes.
I would recommend that before you start on the planning commission comments, that you close the public hearing officially.
Oh, thank you very much. So I will officially close the public hearing at this time. Is that sufficient, Hallie?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Excellent. So let us start with the discussion of the statement of overriding considerations. Does anyone have any discussion points or questions for staff? All right. Okay, moving on to the next resolution discussion of, let's discuss the general plan 2040. Does anyone have any discussion points for the commission or staff regarding general plan 2040? All right. The next one is the discussion of the precise plan, the downtown precise plan. Let's begin discussion on that. Commissioner Havelin?
Sure, I think this is where we might discuss the steps.
Yes.
So I guess I'll supplement my question about, you know, where the steps have to occur with supposing there, there are different height requirements on either side of, of a building. Does, does the, the plan accommodate that?
Yeah, I may step on or Mithali, if either of you are available. I wonder if you might respond to how you've diagrammed the steps. I can take a shot at it, but you may be in a better position as the architect of the drawings. Step on.
Sure. And hopefully everybody can hear me. So good evening, planning commissioners. So with regards to the height of buildings, the, the code establishes a step-back height. And that is typically at the top floor of the base height, the building actually has to be stepped back a distance of 10 feet. And so in, when you sort of look through sort of the normal code standards, there is always sort of. there is always sort of a step back that's built into the building form when the bonus is requested. And then in addition, there are transitional standards that are integrated into the code where buildings that actually have a front-to-back relationship with a lesser intense zone or a front-to-side relationship with a less intense zone, they are also both required to step the building down in both height and mass as it transitions to that lower intensity zone. And so that's sort of a general response. If there's sort of a more specific instance that you'd like to talk about, I'd be happy to attempt to reference that.
Yeah, I guess sort of the thing I'm thinking about is if... So a building spans the block from one street to another. And is it possible that if you built a building that was half the block, it could be four stories on one side, and the other building on the other half of the block was limited to three stories? Would the steps still have to come down to three stories on both sides? Or could it be four stories on one side?
Okay. Sure, thank you for that clarifying question, Commissioner Havelin. So I think what we're talking about is the measurement of height on slope sites. And I think there was some discussion during the presentation regarding one site in particular that spans the distance from Fifth Avenue to Mission. And what the public draft code reflects is that that height measurement basically runs parallel to the slope across the property. So in that instance, if the measurement was 40-foot base height and 50-foot bonus height, those two dimensions would run parallel to the slope, meaning that you could essentially build a three- to four-story building on Fifth Avenue, and you could also essentially build a three- to four-story building on Mission. And the depth of that additional floor, if we sort of think about this in section, the fourth floor that's facing Mission would actually be above, one story above, the fourth floor that is actually along Fifth. Because again, the measurement of that slope is measuring parallel... The height measurement is measured parallel to the slope. So we have a four-story building measured from both sides. But of course, the upper portion is taller, and it's sitting above the portion on Fifth Avenue. And the building essentially has a stepped profile. If that sort of helps clarify that condition.
Well, I'm not sure I understand. So if the code allowed 50 feet on Fifth Street and 40 feet on Mission, the building could still be 50 feet on Fifth Street? Yes, or no?
Yeah, so if you're asking if we increase the height along Fifth, I want to make sure I understand your question there, as opposed to explaining what actually is in the code today. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Stefan, do you want me to share? I can share the slide that was in the presentation. I can pull it back up on the screen if that would illustrate this a little better. Would that help?
Yeah, that might help. Yeah, yeah. And I would say that as you find that very, you know, that there is a basis for measuring heights across slope sites that is reflected in the current zoning ordinance for the city. So when we sought to establish this in the code, we looked to the way that the city was measuring height on slope sites. So as Barry brings this up, I think what I was attempting to refer to is that building that you see on the left-hand side of this diagram. And you can imagine that the left-hand side of that building is facing Fifth Street, and the right-hand side of that building is facing Mission. And you can see that the ground floor, the location of the ground floor is stepping with the slope. So what you get on, when the height is measured the same across the whole parcel, you can see that there are stories facing Fifth. And the green, the light green story is the bonus floor that's facing Fifth. And then if you imagine that the back of the building is facing Mission, there are three stories facing Mission and then a bonus floor above that. And because the measurement of the height is taken across the slope, the four stories on the Mission Street side are actually sitting above the four stories on the Fifth Street side. If you could sort of follow that. So what you see here is that the sloped lines across the parcel are actually measured parallel to the slope. And that basically grants you the ability to step the building up with the height. So I believe what the commenter was requesting was the condition where along Fifth Street, which is again on the left-hand side of this drawing, you would be able to get an extra floor, which you could interpret as taking a measurement from Mission Street. And instead of taking that height measurement and allowing it to follow the slope down the hill, you would carry it, in his words, "at a 90-degree angle straight out," which would actually then allow you to fit an additional floor facing Fifth Streets. But what we have right now is the condition where the measurement of the height is following the slope of the parcel.
So if that were two different buildings not connected, you could have a five-story building on Fifth and a four-story building on Fourth?
If you wanted to do that, what you would have to do is amend what is being proposed on the parcel today to allow for an additional floor fronting Fifth Streets, which right now, again, that 40-50 height is measured all the way across the parcel. If you wanted to get 50 feet of base height on the Fifth Street side, you would just need to raise that height for that southern half of that parcel and essentially split the height, split the zoning on that parcel between two zones, which, you know, I will say is doable because all of the other standards in those two zones are the same except for the height limit that is presented between 40-50 and 40-60. So that is sort of a reasonable, that could be a reasonable compromise.
Okay, I get it. Thanks very much.
Yeah, and Commissioner Havelin, I think the map that is on the screen... Can you guys see the map on the screen now? I don't know if that showed up or not. Okay. Just to show, we're talking about this block right here. And, you know, one of the issues is that the site is all in the same height zone and bonus zone, which is 40 feet base and 10-foot bonus. The idea of splitting the block in the middle so that a taller building could be on the Fifth Avenue side is something that we can look at. Initially, we had some concerns about raising the height of the entire block because of the proximity to the lower density across the street on Mission. But if it was actually split, it could work. So I think we can look at that as a possible solution.
Barry, can I just sort of add one more thing for the record?
Sure.
Is that just, I wanted to sort of point out that the existing height on this parcel today, I believe, is actually 36 feet under the sort of the current... Excuse me, it's actually 42 feet in this location. So the 40-50 condition was intended to basically allow a story higher than what the existing zoning presents today.
Okay, thank you. And I have a question about that property that we're discussing at 2030 to 48 Fifth Avenue. Is that something, is that request for the 60-foot height on Fifth Street, is that something we have to decide tonight? Or can that be decided later, after the precise plan is approved?
I think one of the ways you could you could do it is, I mean, you could make a decision tonight to make that change. But the other thing that you could do is to ask staff to evaluate that and as we present that to the city council, come up with a response to how they would, what our recommendation would be if your commission felt comfortable with that solution. But, you know, it could be one way or the other.
Is there an option where we just basically, you know, kick the can down the road, so to speak, and rely on a request for a variance after the precise plan is approved, as is, without any sort of recommendation from the staff?
So you're saying keep it as is? And then at a future date, if the applicant chooses to, the proprietor chooses to make that change or recommend or request that change through zoning change? So that would be, that would, yeah, I mean, keeping things as is is an option. Barry, I don't know if you want to add to it. Barry and I kind of spoke briefly about, you know, how valuable that would be. I think we also thought it might be a good solution. Barry, do you want to add anything?
Well, just with respect to Commissioner Privatalli's question, the last time this issue came up, we did have a discussion and the commission was split, as Riley mentioned in his comments. And, you know, I think it might be worth, with the additional option on the table of having the site be in two height districts, which we didn't really talk about last time, would be something that would help us if the commission would provide some direction on whether you think that that's a good solution to actually have the building be taller on the Mission, sorry, on the Fifth side than on the Mission side, then we can proceed with making an amendment to the map. It would be more helpful to have that guidance now. My sense is if we don't provide that, then that request will go to the city council. So this is your opportunity to weigh in prior to the council receiving the same request when it gets to plan in a few weeks.
Okay. I'm in favor of that. Commissioner Davidson, did you have a comment?
I guess I would add that the height of the hotel on that same block, I have no problem increasing for an additional floor on Fifth at that side. It just makes sense to me. I don't know why I'd allow it, given that present hotel. I mean, it's one thing to be the tallest building in the block, and we're arguing about heights, but I would support the additional floor on Fifth.
Is that right? Is that right, that it makes it even with the hotel or below?
Yeah, I'm just actually looking that up. I believe the hotel was somewhere between 48 and 54. So I'm looking that up right now. 54-foot tall, so it would be about five stories, yeah.
What we're talking about is, yeah, six feet higher than... Because it would be a 60-foot limit on the Fifth Avenue side.
Okay. And Barry and Ally, do you have a recommendation?
Well, I think we'd like to talk more about the possibility of splitting the height, you know, splitting... I think we'd rather look at a different height zone than change the way we're measuring building height on slopes. Because actually, the way we're measuring building height on slopes is modeled after the way building height is measured on slopes throughout the entire city. So it would be more straightforward to change the height zone so that it divides the parcel, recognizing its slope, than changing the method.
Makes sense. Thank you.
That would be my recommendation. And I think I would feel comfortable that that go to the council, Barry. I know that staff wants to look at that a little bit. But I would say if we need to deliberate, if the council wants to deliberate that, I would feel comfortable that as part of our action tonight. But I would be happy to see if we can do a consensus amongst the planning commission to do that split zone discussion subject to the council review to allow you guys to kind of provide the data that would support if it's something that's doable. I think that's a good idea. I agree with that. Okay. Commissioner Havelin? What's your opinion?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with what Commissioner Mercado just suggested.
Okay. Mr. Davidson, do you agree? Okay. All right, great. And just while we're on the topic of height, does anyone have any more, sorry, discussion on that topic before we move on? Just there was, I think it was Mr. Hurt as well, highlighted the issue between the state density and the precise plan, having a comment. I don't think it's necessary. I mean, my understanding is that the state preempts. So having a footnote in there just doesn't seem like it needs to be. But I'll put it to the other commissioners if anybody sees different. I guess I would ask Ally and Barry what they think, if they think it's worth adding clarification.
I would agree. It's, you know, state law is going to preempt whatever limits we place on, you know, with our regulations. So I feel pretty comfortable with what the downtown precise plan has laid out now. There's, you know, I brought forward some density bonus regulations recently that required us to amend our code, and that may happen in the future. But, you know, regardless of how we're looking at this, you know, if we find that our regulations are not in compliance with state regulations, state regulations do preempt states, our local regulations. So I agree with Commissioner Mercado that it's not necessary. It would be, I think, easy enough to add if, you know, if the planning commission felt more comfortable with that. But again, I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, and I would add too that the three cities that we looked at for, you know, examples, Santa Rosa, Santa Cruz, and San Francisco, none of the plans that referenced those codes had that standard in it. It was always done as kind of a memorandum or a technical appendix. We could link it to the precise plan so that it's easier to find and that the two are, you know, it's an appendix or it's referenced, but not necessarily to bake it into the plan as an adopted method, because then we're stuck amending the plan if it changes.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point. I like the idea of linking it. Yeah, me too. I think from a project applicant standpoint, having that there, that was part of what I heard as well. So I think it's a great idea, Barry. Yeah, looks like we have a consensus on that. I did want to talk briefly about that triangle, the West End. You know, that's something that I feel like, I don't remember us talking about that before, which is kind of odd, but I was a little surprised that there was, you know, higher allowances over there. What's the thinking behind that?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little, Ally. Did you want to?
No, 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 go ahead.
Okay. But we did look at that area as the gateway to the West End and to downtown. And this was really kind of a steering committee. We had a subcommittee of our steering committee that looked at the fact that there should be lower height profile on the West End. And so there's a 40-foot base in most of that area. But that was seen as an opportunity, given its location and the fact that there are some large parcels there with more of a suburban context, large parking lot areas, large areas without structures, where there might have been some opportunities to aggregate some of those parcels. It's about 3.2 acres if you add all those parcels together. And just looking at that relative to the much more fine-grained context of the rest of the West End, which is smaller buildings, smaller parcels, this is really a kind of a different scale and presents a different opportunity. The only difference is that we are allowing for the 20-foot height bonus on those parcels and not the 10-foot. The only difference is that we are allowing for the twenty-foot height bonus on those parcels and not the ten-foot height bonus, so. It is possible that someone could come in and propose a taller project. You know, because of the bonus we're offering, and it's really an it's meant to be an incentive to encourage the consolidation. As Victoria mentioned, they are under different ownerships, so it's a it's a way to incentivize that consolidation of lots to create. More developable sites in an area that has fewer historic resources and more potential than the rest of that part of the city, part of downtown. That was the rationale. I mean, that's not to say that, you know, I know there there is not unanimous agreement on on that one, and there's definitely different views on that.
Okay, and and I'm sorry, can you remind me what the maximum height could be for that?
It would be six, yes, it's a forty-foot base and a twenty-foot bonus, which would be sixty feet, so roughly five-story profile.
Does anyone have any discussion on that?
What would be the the bonus based off of typically for that? I mean, what kind of? And if we're getting sidetracked, I apologize. I'm just trying to visualize, like, how would that site get maximized to that height?
Well, the the way the downtown precise plan breaks it up is you get. A ten-foot height bonus if you provide ten percent affordable. And then if you get, if you provide more than ten percent, you are able to take advantage of the twenty-foot height.
I think that's fine. I mean, I think that's great. That's a great incentive. And if that enhances the the use of that to bring in more affordable housing, then to me, that that makes sense. It sounds like. It's something that's on the radar that would happen, but allowing that incentive incentive to be there in an area that seems to have the infrastructure supported makes sense to me.
I I agree, and I would also add that, you know, it doesn't seem like five stories is that high relative to, you know, some of the. High a high-rise buildings that, you know, other cities have, so I think it's a good compromise. Okay. Great. Any more discussion on? This topic? Otherwise, we'll go to the next one. And actually. My notes disappeared, so could someone remind me what the last topic is?
Sure, I'll do that. So this is the resolution recommending adoption of the two ordinances. The first ordinance repeals the existing downtown zones and addresses the. Cannabis and the. The terms, the permit terms and the large family daycare. Although you can consider those two things, those things separately if you like. The first one is, I would say, the. Rescinding of the zones is more of a housekeeping issue for internal consistency. The second of the two ordinances is the adoption of the form-based code, which again is kind of a housekeeping issue because you're basically adopting the new zoning regulations. After you've rescinded the old zoning regulations.
Great, thank you, Barry. Do we have any discussion on that from the commissioners?
I don't I don't have any comments on rescinding and then adopting the new form. I think the cannabis one, Commissioner Privatalli, you may have raised a question on it too. I I I don't understand it completely on what's being changed. So I just think it'd be good for the record, just a couple of minutes, just to kind of better understand exactly what this update means. And what it would be that we would be approving tonight if we agree to that.
Can I, Paul, do you mind providing some background? I think you. You were involved in making those adjustments if you're still around. Thank you, Paul.
I mean, you know, actually, this is how it works. The state of California issues numerous licenses for various types of cannabis-type businesses. And it ranges from extraction to manufacturing to. To having a cannabis distribution and and all different types of things, and. So what has happened with the with the laws is that they've done some consolidation of some of the of the licensing. And they used to have two separate license types. One was to extract. If someone, if their business was to extract the oil or butter from a cannabis flower. And to produce basically that oil or butter which is sold to a third party, like, for example, a. A company that makes chocolates or edibles or whatever, and then they infuse that that product into their product. And then they have their separate license. What has happened is there's been some consolidation of that. And what now they do allow is for a business to both infuse. And actually create the extraction of the oil simultaneously so that they can take their own product. And 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 infuse that oil into their product and 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 actually create that product. And so what this change does is it allows us to continue with the cannabis-infused product. Type of business that we have now, which is the type of business that buys from a third party. The pre-prepared oil or butter and infuses it into their product. Or it allows that business or new businesses to basically create that oil or butter and then infuse it into their product. But by doing so, that's really more of a manufacturing type use, so what we're suggesting is by consolidating those. That they only be allowed in industrial districts because it's really only an industrial use. And we don't have any cannabis-infused businesses in the one commercial zoning district where we allow them to happen. So by collapsing this and creating sort of this joint. Manufacturing and cannabis-infused type use. We are not impacting any any new existing businesses, but they are pretty much limited to industrial districts. So I'm sorry, that may be a little confusing. A lot of it has to do with the many, many licenses that are issued by the state of California to cannabis-type businesses. But this is really to. To broaden some of the small businesses or that do create products that allow them to actually do the. The create the cannabis oil for better control of their product. So I don't know if if you have any further questions on that, I'm happy to answer that, but that's about as simplistic as I could say. This this change addresses.
So if I may, so is this expanding? Is, I'm sorry, is this expanding the scope of activities related to cannabis, but sort of. Limiting the geographic range to where it already exists?
I think that's a perfect statement. What you just said is just is exactly right. It expands the scope because it allows the small business to actually do their own extraction. And then infuse that project, product into their into their whatever they're selling, whether it's a candy or whether it's an edible or. Or whatever, or or a hand product. And but it limits them to certain locations, so you're absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Just to let people know, I can't see anyone's motion. Everyone's frozen, so if anyone has any other comments, please just go ahead and speak up. I won't be able to see your hand or anything. Okay. So hearing no more comments, let's consider the resolutions. And the first resolution is. Twenty twelve dash oh three recommending city council adoption of California Environmental Quality Act, the CEQA findings of fact. A statement of overriding considerations and a mitigation monitoring program for general plan twenty forty and downtown precise plan. Do I hear a motion? Do you accept that?
I make a motion to accept resolution twenty dash oh three. As stated by Commissioner Privatalli.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth. Ally, could you do a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Davidson.
Yes.
Commissioner Haveman.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Privatalli.
Yes. Excellent, that passes. The next resolution we will consider is twenty twelve dash oh four recommending the city council adoption of the general plan. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the general plan.
Second, Commissioner Davidson.
Excellent, thank you. Ally, do you want to do a roll call?
Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Haveman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Privatalli?
Yes. That passes, congratulations. The next one is res- resolution twenty twelve. Oh, five recommending city council adoption of the downtown precise plan. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution. Mentioned by Commissioner Privatalli.
And for clarification, I I was recalling that there was an interest in the looking at the height.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Or that property.
With the recommendation that staff discussed the possibility of changing the zoning, having dual zones for height requirements on that property. Did I say that right?
Yeah, I'm wondering, Barry, is there an address or is there maybe on the corner? It would be helpful, I think.
Right, we're referring to the parcel on C Street between Mission and Fifth, on the east side of C Street between Mission and Fifth.
Okay, I so amend my statement of the resolution to be consistent with that addition. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to. Accept the change.
And I'll second.
Excellent. Ally, would you mind taking a roll?
Yes, Commissioner Davidson.
Yes.
Commissioner Haveman.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Privatalli.
Yes. Excellent, congratulations. All right, the last resolution is twenty twelve zero six recommending city account, city council approval of two ordinances. And related exhibits that rescind or amend certain provisions of the Santa Fe Municipal Code. And adopt the downtown F B C as the zoning regulations for downtown Santa Fe. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to adopt this resolution as mentioned by Commissioner Privatalli.
Very good, second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Ally, could you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davidson?
Yes.
Commissioner Haveman?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Privatalli.
Yes. Excellent, congratulations. All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Barry, is this the last time we're together?
You know what? I'm coming back for the housing element, so you're not rid of me yet. We we will be moving on to the city council for a meeting on, a hearing on July nineteenth. On the on these items, we are moving straight into the housing element. It's actually got a due date and a deadline. So it's more time sensitive to get that adopted, which is. January twenty twenty-three. It sounds like it's a long way off, but we actually have to get a working draft done sooner than that so that we can. Get it pre-certified by the state, so we'll be moving into that, but I did want to just say thank you to the commission for all of your deliberation and. Particularly to Commissioner Dave, Commissioner Davidson for serving on the. Steering Committee for the general plan and downtown precise plan and for all the hours that you shared with us on in that process. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Barry, and the whole team.
Agreed. Excellent. Huge achievement. All right, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the director's report.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of things. I wanted to mention that, as you all know, this is Commissioner Davidson's last commission. Planning Commission meeting, so I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts. Commissioner Davidson, I'm super grateful to you for a number of things. You, as Barry said, I'll start with the fact that you. Committed to being on the steering committee and and, I mean, that was an amazing task and. You did it and you kept showing up to all the planning commission hearings and we're all super grateful for your commitment to that. Your input in the steering committee, your input at all planning commission hearings have been super insightful and very helpful and really. Resulted, in my opinion, in better outcomes for projects, and I am truly grateful for that. Now, you'll hear me say that a couple of times because I am. You, in your tenure, you saw a number of housing projects, including Los Gamos, North Gate Walk, seven oh three Third Street. You also had a number of commercial projects, and I want to mention in your tenure, you. Participated in and and were instrumental in approving. The two motel projects in our city, one in the downtown and one in the east side of town, and. In each of those, you provided amazing input, and I, again, I'm grateful to you for that. I also wanted just to say separately, you know, when I first started my role here with the city. You reached out and you you just encouraged me to keep going and. You know, kind of from a professional standpoint, I appreciate the work that you've done, but from a personal standpoint, I really appreciate your outreach and your support. And even your continued outreach and friendship, even, you know, throughout your your planning commission tenure, so. I'm so sad that you're leaving. I personally am going to miss you greatly, and I hope that we can continue to remain connected after.
Thank you, Ally, that's nice.
You're welcome. And I I so I know that others have something to say. I want to say also that. Commissioner, Vice Chair Privatalli is. It's his last month, but he has submitted an application and. While I want to say I'm equally. Enamored by the amount of work that you put into this planning commission, I'm also hesitant to say goodbye because I feel like. It's not time yet.
We'll see.
Let's see what happens. If I'm wrong and and we don't see you again, I would like an opportunity to have you come back and allow us to. You know, say some appropriate goodbyes.
Sounds good, thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Davidson. I've equally been really impressed with your performance. Sorry to see you go.
Yeah, I just want to jump, piggyback on that, Ally. Thank you for sharing that. When I started as Commissioner Davidson, you were the chair when I first started. And you were gangster, like with all, yeah, you didn't take any flack, you kept the business tight. I thought, oh, my gosh, what did I get into? Because I don't know what I'm doing, and this person is running the show. And like Ally said, you were so great about welcoming me, showing me the robes, just being super cordial. I really appreciate it. I think you're a huge inspiration. I've looked at your guidance many times. I'm still in total denial. I have a feeling you'll change your mind because why would you want to hang out with high school students instead of us? But I get it. I totally get it, and yeah, just thank you. Thanks for serving the community and. Being so active and an inspiration and a mentor and a guide as you have been. Hopefully, we'll continue to see you and looking forward to seeing you around the city more often. So thank you again.
I'll I'll weigh in just a little bit. I'm sorry that we only got to serve for two meetings. But as a as a longstanding member of the Santa Fe community, I want to thank you for everything that you've done. You've clearly put an enormous amount of effort. And energy into the job, so very much. and energy into the job. So very much appreciate it. And I hope that our paths cross, I guess, in real life sometime. So thank you.
Well, thank you. This is great to hear from you guys. I want to apologize for the darkness. We are doing our remodel and I just found out I have no lights in this room. So I'm using my phone, but thank you all. Really, thank you, Paul and Liam, Barry and all. And this is like joining the commission and it's been an invaluable experience and just and personal growth, and I am just so happy to have worked with so many subject matter experts. I've learned so much about the city of San Rafael government and just I I feel like I just grew a lot on the professional level and yes, I have a lot of projects that are dear to my heart and I won't go away. You'll go see me speaking to the commission. I I, as you know, I really feel passionate about affordable housing and sea level rise issues and climate change. And I think it's the way to go to protect the earth for our our youth. And I am not really looking forward to hanging out with all teenagers. But yeah, I'll take a break and I'm sad to leave. This is really a great experience, but I will keep in touch and you'll see me around. I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davidson. I do have one more thing that I just want to point out. We, I think I might have mentioned this last time, but the maybe not, the city council adopted an eviction moratorium to extend the moratorium that was in place from the county's regulations. And because the emergency order has ended, the county no longer has the ability or the authority to really create an ordinance that applies to all of the jurisdictions within the city, within the county. So that left us with the the need to adopt our own moratorium. We really weren't sure what the state was going to do. We thought maybe they would adopt their extend their eviction moratorium. And but we were nervous that there might be a gap. So the city council adopted that on the twenty first last week, I think, yeah. And what I'm hearing now is the state is either has already signed an extension or is about to do that this week. So what that does is it basically preamps our our moratorium, but we're still glad that we moved forward with it because in the event that we didn't see movement at the state level, it would have left some residents in a predicament. So that's where we are. I I don't have a lot more. I just thank you for tonight. There was a lot of hard work by your commission throughout the process. Barry put in a lot of work, but I I know that you all put in a lot of work as we were releasing documents. There wasn't a lot of time to, you know, read everything, but you did it and you showed up with questions and I'm really grateful for to you for that. So that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Ali. Appreciate that. Do we do we have any communication from any commissioners?
Do we know when the next meeting may be, Ali? Do we have anything scheduled?
We don't have anything scheduled right now for July. So I will reach out with, you know, if something comes up for August, I will reach out and send emails. Line copies, of course, as usual, and let you know.
Okay. Oh, and a quick thanks to Commissioner Privatelli for tonight. That was a lot of ordinances or a lot of resolutions. They were complicated. There was some great, interesting public comment. It was it was difficult. So just wanted to give you some props on handling that so well.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, as people may know, it's my first time being chair. A little a little rough at the beginning, but I think I got the hang of it eventually.
I I want to add a couple of comments. I've been in quite a few very, very counter all well-attended meetings. And I just want to say that the way Barry handles this multiple interest and how he has the skill to move forward with his agenda, it's it's an impressive way. It's very, I I admire your skills so much and and I've also seen Stefan with the form-based code and his patience in trying to educate us all on these new concepts. And and I can't just the way you guys handle the controversies, Ali, same with you. I admire that, and I just want to mention it that you guys are truly experts on on all of these issues. Thank you, and I've learned so much from you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Davidson. I I just had one thing I wanted to share with the commission. There was a really good article in S F Gate on June twenty-third about a series of briefs on how racial segregation is actually increasing in the Bay Area from an institute at U C Berkeley called the Othering and Belonging Institute. And I started to read some of those briefs, and I thought that they were excellent. There's also some really good maps that the institute created showing levels of segregation and versus integration in the Bay Area. And I think it it's it was definitely help helpful in for me in understanding some of the decisions that we've been we've been making around A D Us and single-family homes and and whatnot. And I think it would would be useful in informing some of our the material from the Othering and Belonging Institute would be useful in informing some of our future decisions. Excellent. All right, with that, does anyone have?
Really quick, I just want to say thank you for sharing that. That's really critical for the discussion on the housing element that's coming up. I think that's going to be a huge part of it. And and just, I mean, the last thing for Commissioner Davidson. In our community, just the last props that I feel is so critical is to see this amazing Latina that has been on our commission for so long. I think it's been a really important part to the discussion, so I just want to give kudos to that. But as we enter into the housing element. I hope we can share that through Ali or whatever. That's going to be a critical critical part, I think, of our vision discussion. So thanks for highlighting that.
Yeah, agreed. Excellent. All right. Well, with that, I will call for the adjournment. Is there anything official that I need to do to adjourn the meeting, Ali?
You just adjourn it. You just say this meeting is adjourned.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Everyone, have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Congratulations again.
Next time.